Well, thank you, everybody. Thank you for coming out. As you know, we do these town halls. I'm firmly a believer. I firmly believe in doing these town halls and having these conversations. And I want you to know, I do appreciate you coming out and taking the time. We got two more of these town halls today. I think we go to Bustai...where we going next?
Bustai and then Hinsdale.
And then Hinsdale, yeah. Bustai and then Hinsdale. And obviously, I know that the topic of the day is all healthcare, all healthcare. And I see many folks bringing that issue in. But I know we're gonna cover a lot of the topics. That's just what I was going to say. So I know there's a lot of attention to healthcare right now. And what we try to do with these town halls is to cover as many topics as possible. But we do do the written questions to a degree, just because if we run out of time, it allows us to communicate with you if we don't cover a topic that maybe you wanted to have, ask a question or provide your input for. That being said, why don't we get right to the questions that have been submitted? And I'm sure we can lead with some of the things that are on your mind. And again, I want to just say, thank you, thank you, thank you for coming out.
How do you say "thank you" in Russian?
Barb wanted to talk about the pre-existing medical conditions and how the bill that was just passed will impact those with pre-existing conditions.
Who is this?
Barb. I don't know the township, but yep.
Hi Barb.
Hi. We have, I think we have before Barb, so I appreciate the question.
The question is about pre-existing condition and how the American Healthcare Act impacts that and where we're going in regards to repeal and replace the Affordable Care Act process.
Sir, my primary question is whether or not Republicans investigated, did any research at all to establish what percentage of the population has pre-existing conditions? Because we're going from ideological to impact.
Okay.
And personal.
Appreciate that. And having a son is a type 1 diabetic. This is something that has been dealing, we've been dealing with, or now he's 16 and 4.
You're on your insurance. Shame on you, on your insurance. You want your insurance.
So one of the rules that hopefully we can abide by, I want to have a conversation. I really do want to have a conversation. I think we need to have a conversation across the country. So I totally respect everybody's rights, everybody's ability to express themselves. So maybe if we can just have the conversation, I tend to find that this is more productive.
You don't listen. You don't listen. You don't listen. You don't listen. Have a conversation, let's not listen. You don't listen.
And there are gonna be things that we are in 100% disagreement on. And that's just the way it is. And I respect the difference. I respect your position, and I want to hear the position, because I think we can always be better working together than when we don't, when we kind of just fight with each other. So the issue on pre-existing condition, just so we're all clear, that is a fundamental reform of the Affordable Care Act that I've supported, continue to support. And I think there's a lot of misinformation out there when it comes to the issue about what this legislation does to pre-existing conditions. And there are millions of, there are millions of Americans that have pre-existing conditions. And we want to make sure that those protections are adhered to as we go forward. So I don't see in the legislation, the actual legislative text. And we have the bill here.
Did you read it?
Yes. I just gotta ask that question on NPR? Yeah. So, just so we're all on the same page, yeah. Here's the base text, okay? This is what it is. Those are a few hundred pages. And from my perspective, I don't know where this direct attack in the legislative, in the legislation is. So the concern that's being raised is under the theory that we do provide. We do provide. I'm sorry for the distraction. I guess the news is doing a live feed as we speak. So I guess we'll let them do their part.
Shame on you. Shame on you.
So on the pre-existing condition issue, under the law that we just voted for, I have always been a states' rights, I've always been a states' rights individual. Look at our record, we have been very clear on that. We have been giving, we will give waiver authority to a state to apply to the Department of Health and Human Services for a waiver from the provisions of the Affordable Care Act that continue forth. Pre-existing conditions. Because generally, we believe, I believe, that the state government, the local government, is in a better position to know its population, know its constituencies, to come up with innovative solutions to the problems they face, and give that flexibility to the state. So how, how folks are interpreting that this legislation directs that the pre-existing condition reform is repealed, it's just not accurate. This is the ability, if they can show they can do it better at the state level, if they can do something that's going to improve on healthcare for their state populations, then the state makes the application to the Health Secretary, and the Health Secretary then reviews the application and approves the waiver if it is consistent. So how, how folks are interpreting that this legislation directs that the pre-existing condition reform is repealed, it's just not accurate. This is the ability, if they can show they can do it better at the state level, if they can do something that's going to improve on healthcare for their state populations, then the state makes the application to the Health Secretary, and the Health Secretary then reviews the application and approves the waiver if it is consistent.
And thousands die. And thousands die.
Yeah, Barb, Barb's question.
My concern, sir, my concern, sir, has everything to do with who's going to lose coverage because of these pre-existing conditions. I think you'll find that that's personal and that that's something that extends through the entire country and isn't just remain to New York.
And so exactly that. So I don't know of a state that is going to apply for a waiver that's going to result in that pre-existing condition condition. I just don't see that happening. So if you believe we should have one size fits all healthcare for America, I respect that. I understand. I understand people in this audience want that. I understand. I don't support that in one, I never. So I've been very clear in our position, when it's come to healthcare in America, I don't support a one-size-fits-all.
Shame on you. Shame on you. Shame on you. Do your job.
We have always, we have always supported, we have always supported having the ability to give flexibility to the states and the local constituencies. So appreciate it.
Shame on you. Shame on you.
You've said that everyone will be covered, but the cost in pools will go so high that people can't afford it. People can't afford $10,000, $20,000, $30,000, $40,000, $50,000 a year because they have an existing condition. We understand that they're saying, you can get it, but can you afford it is the question.
So in the theoretical situation, I think. There's nothing in the law, there's nothing in the law that removes that pre-existing condition reform. There's nothing in this law that does that.
But the state does.
No, it doesn't.
It has costs.
It applies for a waiver if a state wants to make that application and go down that path. And they, I don't know a state that will do that, especially a state in New York. If they do, they gotta show that they meet the benefits or the improvement for healthcare for their population.
How can you improve on what is already there?
I'm sorry.
How can you improve on not allowing pre-existing conditions? You allow it or you don't?
We allow it. We're in the base bill. It is there. Pre-existing condition reform is there. So if a state, if a state can have an innovative, new proposal that deals with pre-existing condition in a way that shows that it can do it better, I believe. So I understand, I understand where you're coming from. So now the higher schools, just so we have an understanding of what the higher schools are talking about.
Let me speak to this, because I have a child and I move from one state to another. I have a child, I am severely disabled, severely disabled. And I can tell you that there is a difference from state to state. I moved from Pennsylvania with her to New Hampshire to New York. New York has advanced services, but if you allow these states to do this, I can guarantee you that the services of my child who sees in New York, I was not getting in New Hampshire and I was not getting in Pennsylvania. That is exactly what Marcia's talking about. And the Medicaid block grant, my question is, are you gonna take services away from my child? The Resource Center here, who deals with development to be disabled, has come out with a very strong statement, as well as every, every major medical advocate group.
Yes.
From AKA. You cannot do this to us and to our children. You're doing a death panel.
You're killing us. You're killing us.
Medical health services? I mean, I really question if you read this law, would you come up and say that the epidemic that we have in our county is the number one priority, and yet you vote for a law that takes that out and the mandate, that they don't have to provide it? Explain that.
That's not true. Show me in the legislation.
Well, show us the legislation. We're gonna have it.
Right here.
Can I have your copy? And then read it. I'm not sure you had the legislation, had it been set up to this stage.
Where in the legislation here?
Well, you show me. Show me where it addresses mental health services and says it won't provide.
It says a state has the ability to apply for a waiver, but the base requirements are still here. The essential health benefits upon which you refer are still in the legislation. Those are not, they're not repealed.
A waiver.
But the waiver for a state to apply for a waiver does have that authority to do. So the Department of Health and Human Services at the federal level will receive an application from a state that wants to go down that path. And again, I don't envision your state doing this, nor do I envision any state doing this. So the waiver.
They have to demonstrate that they're doing it right, that they're doing healthcare as a federal. Can we read the bill online?
What's that?
Can we read the bill online? When was it released online?
It was, it's been out for the last 40, the base bill has been out for at least 60 days. And the legislation that we have been doing, the legislation we've been working on was in the Better Way document for about the last year and a half. A lot of these proposals were out there in Tom Price's piece of legislation when he was in the, in Congress. So the issue of waivers is generating a lot of misinformation for a lot of folks that have been calling the office and I believe a lot of folks in this room. The base reforms are still in the text, are still in the legislation. It was the waiver ability that I think is generating a lot of these concerns. So let's have a conversation. You said your question was on Medicaid block grant and the impact that that will have. So now this is a fair question.
Can I, can I read you the question?
Sure.
This is, this is from the Resource Center. Is everyone familiar with the Resource Center? In our county, it's the ARC. It's the Association for Retarded Citizens. This was their statement. If the bill becomes law, they were urging us not to call you to say vote no. If the bill becomes laws, it will fundamentally change the Medicaid program. Rather than people automatically becoming eligible for services if they need the certain criteria, such as in on SSI in New York State, Medicaid will become a block grant or utilize a per capita cap, even system with four states to place limits on services. People with disability rely on Medicaid. It is their lifeline. The people on Medicaid, I just want to bring this up too, 65% of the people in nursing homes are on Medicaid. They're gonna be losing. Children are gonna be losing. We know many, many children that are on Medicaid. And the disabled, like my child. You, if you limit the services for the elderly in nursing homes, if you limit services for children like my daughter, who is a total need, severely disabled child, if you limit services for children like to get vaccines and be seen by the doctor, you're sentencing them to a death panel.
Yes.
Okay. So Judy, first of all, the document right there has a fundamental mistake in it. There's no such thing as a per capita program that we're discussing. It's per capita. It's per capita. Totally different program. But, so, I, so, just so they're aware, you may want to reach out to the Resource Center, we will too, to make sure that they correct their positions, so we're all talking on the same. Well, no, capital, capital programs are different. That's a different situation. So the per capita cap program that we are supportive of, right now Medicaid has a split based on percentages. Essentially, it's 50/50 between the Fed and the state government. There's no cap on the growth of that program in the sense of, we have seen it in New York, for example. New York got stunned to the tune of, I think, $8 billion. I have so many numbers on my head, where they were inflating their Medicaid numbers to get more money from the federal government, and they, they were actually fined to the tune of $7 to $8 billion for doing that. They called it medicating. Medicating. It became a verb. And so the issue that we're trying to deal with is how do you keep Medicaid in a, in a way that contains the cost explosions that we're seeing in Medicaid across the country? Because if you have a percentage split, the incentive is to spend more money. So what was being discussed is a static block grant or a per capita block grant? And I have always been, when we had to decide between the two, which path would be the better path to take, per capita block grant was, to me, the more attractive program.
Fingers lying, liars.
And so what we fundamentally, what we have fundamentally tried to do, and on a per capita block grant program, you take the populations that are being serviced by Medicaid, you multiply it by the cost per enroller in Medicaid to figure out what that cost is, and then that is the number that the state gets. So as the populations go up and down, that enrollment number is multiplied to get that number to the state. Now you have a cap on the amount of money going to the state, so the state is in a position to work to contain those costs as opposed to increase the cost. So the argument about services being cut is something we're sensitive to, because if you don't have the resources, you're gonna have a problem. But we wanted to make sure that the per capita formula, especially for the disabled folks and the older Americans that were sub-grouped out in the per capita forms we came up with, got a bump up in their rate, which is in this law that provides for any percent.
What about Americans like my daughter who's a cancer survivor? This one. She's eight. You voted to take away her coverage.
That's not true.
This is her five years ago.
That's not true.
She will never.
It's not true. It's just not true. It's just not true. And so.
You have taken away her coverage. Explain to her in her face.
It's not true.
What? That's a.
What's her name?
Shame on you. 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 Shame on you.
Nobody wants to take her coverage away.
You don't have her coverage. We don't have her coverage.
It's just not true.
But it is truly.
It's just not true. That is not the case. Because if we don't, if we don't get these healthcare costs and the health insurance costs under control, no one is going to help. I am answering your question. You will have coverage. You will have coverage. She will have coverage.
At what cost? She will have coverage. How will she get coverage? She'll be denied.
Because the pre-existing, no, that's not true. That's just not true. The pre-existing condition forms will be going forward, and they will be there.
How will she next 12 years to adulthood and she gets her own job? How is she gonna get coverage being a cancer survivor?
It will be there. That pre-existing condition.
Oh, no. No.
That's not, that's not true. It's just not true. Go ahead.
I used to be a community, I used to be a community health advocate. And one time I had a fellow call me, he had prostate cancer and he said he was at Medicaid office, and they turned him down because he was like $10 or $20 over. And I said, didn't they tell you about the Medicaid cancer treatment program which covers that? You know, and I connected him to the right person, but those kind of caps are gonna, and I've heard this kind of story with other community health advocates. So those caps are going to force perhaps municipalities to do dirty practices and, you know, and how many people didn't reach me? How many people have died because they didn't know before the ACA about the Medicaid cancer treatment program that New York State has? I know New York State has high standards, but still, there's gonna be people falling to the wayside that shouldn't.
Appreciate that.
Why did you exempt yourself?
So this is a town hall meeting and we're supposed to get to know one another. So I don't know you very well, Mr. Reed, but I would ask you, number one, are you Christian?
No.
Yes? Okay, I would ask, number two, do you speak Spanish? Do you speak Spanish? Okay. Entonces, si yo te pregunto, ¿qué pasa con las leyes del estado de Nueva York? ¿Cómo vas a responderme? So I asked you, if you spoke Spanish, how would you translate, in a way, my translation, to the people who spoke Spanish about healthcare, the details? It's like speaking another language, what you're doing. And waiver this, waiver that, pay for this, pay for that. How do we wade through all this stuff to understand? This should have been brought to the American people in a way that can be understood by all, and this is a human right.
I appreciate that, and that's why we do these town halls. That's why we've been doing these town halls. That is why we have an open law policy in our office. That is why we have direct communication with social media. We try to use all the levers. We do a weekly press conference with our local press, trying to get these issues out to people.
You don't listen. You don't listen.
That's why we want your support.
No, we may disagree. We may disagree, but we do try to find that common ground. And so what we have tried to do is be part of the efforts to get that information out. And I encourage my other colleagues to do the same thing. And I encourage them to do it.
Would you explain the provision for how to sit down for people to have some understanding?
And I understand, and I think that's what causes a lot of, and I totally understand and empathize with the fear, the anxiety, because we are talking about healthcare. It's a very personal situation. We have all had experiences in our life dealing with healthcare. My son is a type 1 diabetic. My own issue, my wife's issue, my family's issue. And that is something.
Want to kick out healthcare?
The exemption is something we took care of immediately. And this is part of the, and that's fair criticism. That's fair criticism.
So what do you gotta do about it?
The reason why, that's with the bill. That's with the bill to say, we are not exempt. We should never have been exempted. We will never be exempted again. And what they did, just so you understand the background, I'm just trying to give you the details so there's real information out there. There was a parliamentary question in the Senate that was raised, and when they were drafting the legislation to protect the bill as it goes to the Senate, so that it can be voted on in the Senate for a 51-vote threshold policy, they put that language in, not realizing what it would do in regards to members of Congress essentially. That's why when we read the bill, that's why when we read the bill and we went through the process, we said, this cannot stand. We cannot be part of efforts to exempt anyone out of this legislation. And that's why the Martha McSally amendment that passed unanimously in the House said, we as a Congress, Democrat, Republicans, stand united not to exempt members of Congress in any different way. And that's riding along with this legislation.
Isn't that a tip off that it's not a great thing for everybody?
Why didn't we fix it in the first place as they're drafting the process? Fair criticism, I accept their criticism. It should never, it shouldn't have been there.
If it's not so good, is it, how is this exemptable? Isn't that a tip off that it's not good for everybody?
There was a procedural parliamentary issue that raised the issue. Not that we substantively advocated for that at all. We just did not advocate for that. It was in there because the people that drafted it had to put it in because they were trying to.
We're gonna let Lillian ask her question directly to you. Lillian is eight.
Can I see your sign language? Both of my, my son and my daughter were in section 8.
Will you, Tom Reed, promise to use Trump care?
Sure.
So, honey, Lauren, just so we're clear, we are definitely not going to exempt ourselves. We are gonna be treated just like everyone else, and that's the right thing to do.
Shame on you.
Thank you for coming. I got something for you.
No, don't take it, well, give it back. Say, don't take it.
Well, I'm sorry, but if your mom doesn't want you to have it, that's okay. But I appreciate you coming, okay?
We have to hear constituents. We have overwhelmingly told you we were against this. You can understand. That you were, why you voted for this. You had 219 negatives and 66 positives to that announcement. We spoke with Allison a few weeks ago in your office, and she said, they keep track of all the, they keep track of everybody who calls. If we call you 10 times, they will have that information. So we said, can we get that information? And she said yes, but apparently she changed her mind. You won't let us know how many people tell you they are for this or against this. At a meeting we, at a meeting we were going to at Webb, we asked you how many people have to tell you they are against the law or for a law to change your mind? You said every single constituent, every brand-new infant, every person in a nursing home who has Alzheimer's has to tell you.
That's not what I said.
Before you listen.
I said I tried to listen to all 717,000 people. 717,000 people we represent. And we, we tried to listen to all of the voices. The silent majority, the folks that don't come to town hall meetings, the folks that are talking to us from other areas of the district, other than the people here today.
You listen, but it doesn't count.
Give the statistic.
Allison just said no. She's not a no.
But, we'll give you the, it's not a math equation here. This is trying to have a dialogue with folks.
That's the end of my, based on what your constituents want.
No, that's not true. That's just not true.
But that's what you just said.
No, we listened to the entire voice of the 717,000 folks. That's why we do this.
They don't want this bill to change their mind.
I will take that input into consideration. I think we have, we have an election every two years. We go through the election process every two years. Our positions have been very clear. That is something I pride myself on, is that we have been very clear with folks where I stand on issues. I don't be one of these individuals, elected officials, coming here and the easy path for me today would be to tell you exactly what you want to hear and then go to another town hall and say, that's not what I do. I tell you where I stand on the issues. I think that's the right thing to do and tell people where we are going forward.
So Mary from Donkirk wanted to talk about the effect the healthcare bill has on women's health and small hospitals in our area.
So let's, let's talk, okay, let's talk about impact on hospitals funding. I do want to, there is a section in the bill that we do repeal the DISH cuts. Do you, do you know that, that are coming? We do repeal the DISH cuts that are scheduled to take effect under this legislation. Did you know that? Those are for, well, I, for the disproportionate share hospitals, which a lot of our hospitals are, they are serving our Medicaid and our sensitive populations, if you would, and they get an enhanced reimbursement rate, and that is scheduled to be cut under the Affordable Care Act, and we repeal that in this legislation. That was something that was very important to me, to the tunes of hundreds of billions of dollars that were there.
Someone insurance.
Billions.
All right, well, somebody didn't do it anyway.
I'm sorry, what was that?
How does it affect Medicare? Is that our fault?
Okay. Okay, one, Medicare is not part of this legislation, so there, there's nothing in this legislation that deals with Medicare cuts or anything associated with that. Actually, under the Medicare disproportionate share payments that they receive in a different program that we didn't touch in this legislation, that if this generates any additional uninsured populations, and there could be potentially some of that that occurs, like going to the side line, they will receive an enhanced reimbursement rate under those Medicare disproportionate shares, which is a positive thing. I'm sorry, what's that? Correct. Yeah, yeah. Now, we do, we deal with taxes. We deal with taxes. There are some taxes that deal with Medicare funding on the revenue side, but not cuts. I just want to be clear. We have supported repealing the tax burden that the Affordable Care Act has put on folks across the country. And those are from... It's a burden on the high bills. I have supported reducing taxes in front of the board. Sure. Do I believe healthcare is a right that people have access to? Yes, this is something we should champion. This is something we should promote, and this is something we should provide as a right to all Americans. But the gentleman's question, it's a fair question because it's a right. So how do we deliver healthcare to make sure that it's here in America in perpetuity? And the status quo, in my opinion, the status quo does not achieve that as we speak. Watching what's happening with the Affordable Care Act, watching what's happening with the insurance carriers and the premium notices that are going to be going out here over the next two to three weeks, a 40% insurance premium, and we haven't done anything. That's just under the Affordable Care Act that this is coming. No, that's coming. That's coming. 40% premium increases. Be prepared for it, just so you're aware of it. Are coming, but they just cannot be sustained any longer. So we're trying. I feel it's the responsible approach to try to be ahead of it, trying to deal with it, rather than a lot of folks just say, "Maintain the status quo. Don't do anything and go forward and hoping... And hope for the best." That's not it.
Joanne? So Joanne, we'll make sure we touch on that too. Joanne also wanted to touch on CBO scoring and why you didn't wait for another score to come out.
Okay, let's go with this help. That was in the prior question. That was... What in particular... Just so we're clear, you know, we have always been and will continue to be someone who has not supported Planned Parenthood funding. I am a pro-life member. I'm a pro-life individual. And so that... And that is why... And that is why... That is why in the bill, I... You read, "We have put enhanced funding into healthcare providers, federally health-qualified centers that we do have here in the district, which we need more of, and this funding hopefully will go to provide for that women's health."
It does it very well, and it prevents abortion. Yes.
And I'm very supportive of prevention, education, older... Because of the issues... Because of the issues that have been raised on the life issue.
But those are...
And that's why we've advocated with Planned Parenthood. We've said, "Why can't we separate these two out so it's clear, there's no issue?" And there's been no indication of any willingness to have that common ground, because that common ground, I think, could be achieved readily, easily. The fungibility of money is a real issue and the other issues that...
The CBO score.
So we have a base score. This is... But I will accept this criticism because this is something that, you know, if we could have gotten a full score on the amendments, that is something I asked our folks to do. I weighed in and said, "I believe that would have been more helpful." But the base score, the base score, just so we're clear, the base score covered pretty much 90% of the legislative text. So we go into this eyes-wide-open. We understand what the score would have been and where it's going. The other issue that this gets into is with the CBO bean counters. They were telling us they're having a very difficult time because I was like, "Can't you speed this up? Can't you give us the full score?" And because the amendments dealt with waiver language and waiver estates, very difficult for CBO to come back and say, "We know what states are going to apply for waiver." There are reports out there. There are governors, there are 16 governors, I believe, who support this and say, "We're not..." You know, waivers are not contemplated across the country. So they couldn't give us a score because they were having this internal debate in the bean counter world as to, "We don't know what states are going to do." Well, maybe, maybe not. Maybe, maybe not. And so the issue became, they decided to go to the floor, they made that call, and then we had a vote on the legislation that was before. But that is fair criticism, not having that full score. But I believe the score of the original text gives you a good indication of what the score would have been with those amendments. The premiums gone down, and when you go from an individual mandate, one-size-fits-all piece of legislation that the Affordable Care Act does, the bean counters look at that as a mandate, and they assume compliance. That is, to me, unrealistic. And if you remember what the score had before on the Affordable Care Act, where it guaranteed 21 million folks would have health insurance, and now the actual reality of the number is 10 million, that's a miss by the Congressional Budget Office. And so you have to also take the information, not just be beholden, in my opinion, not to be beholden to the bean counters, not to be... No, we have the base report. And make sure that when you make these decisions, you do it as informed as you possibly can, engage in the process.
There was other topics that people wanted to get to today. I know that climate change is a big issue, and, Tom, they want to know how you're going to combat climate change with your support of the policy of energy. Andrew from Cordonia.
Andrew? So I hope we can find some common ground here today. We have supported things like the production tax credits, investment tax credit. We have been on the Ways and Means Committee. We write the tax policy there on the committee, and it's going to be part of the tax reform process. And our voice has been heard when it comes to things like wind and solar. We've been recognized as kind of... People call us the solar Republican, if you would. I believe this is... I've signed on to the climate change caucus and resolutions. So if you look at our... If you look... No, they have. And so... And so we have signed on to that resolution. We have joined that caucus. I believe that we can solve this problem. I really do believe we can have an all-of-the-above-energy policy that moves us in that direction.
But you said that you didn't think regulations were the answer, quote-unquote. What has convinced you... This is an honest question, not rhetorical. What has convinced you that industry and corporations will act responsibly if the government does not speak for the people in favor of our health and the health of our environment? What has convinced you?
There really are two tools here. You can try to mandate and direct this outcome from government fiat, from government declaration. And from my perspective, that has not been the most effective tool to do this. What I have tried to promote is the other lever. Because take some standards. I'll give you an example. We were dealing with the boiler situation, and there were regulations coming out of the EPA. And they were trying to have the boiler industry achieve what they call the MAX standards, the Maximal Achievable Control Technology Standards. And low and behold, when they mandated these regulations, they don't even have the technology to measure what they were trying to hold the industry to in order to achieve the emission number that they were trying to get to. How can you mandate something if you don't even have the technology in order to measure it? That doesn't make sense to me. And then you face... Then you face fine. A reasonableness... Well, I don't know if rush is the right word, but a reasonable approach to the regulatory environment is something I support. So a reasonableness, looking at the cost-benefit, make sure the technology is there to achieve what you're trying to direct by regulations. But I believe what can move the needle more... What you can move the needle more with is if you create an environment that is based on innovation, that is truly committed to an all-of-the-above-energy strategy, looking over the horizon, and that's what we have put out there with our energy plan, is to promote that investment tax policy, that production tax credit, that research and development tax credit, so that you can create the energy portfolio of tomorrow and use the private sector to do that.
The industries will act responsibly when they're...
I believe having reasonable regulations over those industries is something I've been supportive of and have publicly supported and that we have voted for. So having a reasonable regulatory oversight, to me, is not objectionable. And so the companies need to be held in check. If they go down the path of abusing, of violating the law, intentionally contaminating our environment, those types of things, yeah, they should be vigorously enforced and they should be vigorously held to account. And I supported the repeal of those regulations.
I know all about it. You basically passed legislation and told the coal industry, "You can put more refuse into the water and use it as a smokescreen for the poor miners, saying, 'This is going to create your jobs,'" and it's a lie. So the tool you're using is a deflection where you pick one outrageous incident like the boilers and try to dissuade the whole argument because you're using a reflection tool. You have stood behind the waivers as how it's going to protect everybody, and you voted for that. I want you to point by point tell me what are the actual objectives that the secretary's going to use to determine waivers, because if it's just subjective, that's a bill to do it. So in that bill, does it state point by point what levels does a state have to meet or exceed to get away with it?
So essentially, there's five criteria in the bill. And what we'll do, rather than go through the bill and find the actual page and go through that time, we'll pull it out and we'll give you a copy before we leave. So they are to show that they're driving premiums down, that they are providing healthcare to more folks, and that they are doing it in a way that's going to provide more access to care and not less to care. Those are both...
See, you're trying to bring them down by lowering the value of the policy, so that's meaningless. I could put together an insurance policy that excludes about everything and sell it for $42 a month, and it's great as long you stay healthy. But what you're doing is you're using... It's another deflection. You're saying, "Lower rates." Well, there's got to be a level of value, because anybody can lower rates by making it a know-nothing plan, where it's going to cover a plant.
Selling a candy bar wrapper without the candy bar.
The point where you have to answer, "Yes, we lowered it, but we didn't take away the value of the insurance."
And that's exactly the application. You're absolutely right. You do not want a process that provides a waiver that people can hollow out the insurance requirement just because they're providing insurance that provides no coverage whatsoever. The standards and the requirements that are in there are to provide the innovation and flexibility for states to provide more healthcare, cheaper healthcare, and then implement innovative tools to do things on healthcare side, not just health insurance, but on healthcare side to promote lower healthcare costs on top of it.
So... Why should it matter what state I live in? I am a type 1 diabetic. I am a cancer survivor. I make $1,000 a month just for my insulin by losing my insurance. We stood up and we set the pledge to the flag of the United States of America. Why should it matter what state I live in?
Congressman, are you going to run in 2018? Are you going to run for reelection? And if all for a position with the Trump administration, would you take it?
We're running. We are running.
You're running from the...
The job I've done. The job I've done. Why does it matter? Because the one-size-fits-all... I understand you support the Affordable Care Act. You support that federal mandate. And one-size-fits-all is the policy you want me to advocate for. But I want to be very clear, I don't support that philosophy or that... If a state... If a state could do it better... So if South Carolina... South Carolina can address your issue better, why not go by that flexibility and the viewers' of the freedom to move the South Carolina?
Respectfully, you say, "I have the freedom to move." Are you going to find my husband and I... There's no freedom of... Exactly.
But why don't you want to encourage an innovative...
And could you possibly give me an example of how another state, just to say, "Yes, we're going to cover the existing conditions if they're making that better"?
That's exactly the point. That's exactly the point. The baseline reform, the baseline reform is still in law. We are protecting that baseline reform.
If a state was finding a better way to do that, shouldn't it have applied to the human...
What you would hope... Hold on, this is very good. What you would hope is that a state that measures down a half, and maybe they think they can do it better, but then if they can't, because the facts are just throughout the knotty...
So why can't go to the hospital in DKN and be sick because my state was experimenting and not doing it better? So if people get sick and die during that experimental phase...
Totally understand.
Can't a state do that now? Why do they need a warranty?
They all can. And that's the point. That's not... We're trying to provide more flexibility, more innovation. So to your question about what state, I don't see a state... I have not seen a state that's stepping forward saying, "We can do this. We want this to be this model," because we don't know what's over the horizon. It's a philosophical difference. We don't know what a state could offer if they said, "This is how we want to deal with our high-risk pools." And that's what the high-risk pools are all about. That's what we're trying to get is innovative markets, not only in healthcare, but also in health insurance. So to provide that flexibility is something I think we're just never fundamentally going to reach. So the baseline reforms are the basis of the condition reforms of the ACA. The baseline reforms are the essential health benefits. We were part of the... There was discussion of taking essential health benefits out of the federal law and delegating...
And how about the donor health?
We don't address that here in this...
I know when everybody falls into everyone's, it's going to be something...
So the question about the donor health, we don't deal with the donor health in this legislation because it doesn't deal with Medicare. It wasn't... That's not part of it. That needs to be... Yeah, we need to deal with that because there's many who are predicting that that's going to be another problem on the horizon that we're going to have to deal with. But the reform that covered it now is not in this legislation. But those are the kind of things we'd love to get to the next phase of dealing with the proactive thing in a preventive way. That's why I'm trying to work with folks I know.
Hey, I'm from another country, comma, please. Can I please ask? Single payer. So I'm actually original from Austria. I want to put you in time for single payer. When we have our salaries come back, half of it goes to taxes and health. It's very expensive. But you know what? The rich pay. And the rich pay and help to support everybody, to support everybody. It doesn't matter pre-division. It doesn't matter where you live, what the... it doesn't matter where you live, what their income is, they can get healthcare. So I would like to ask you, now that I'm also in the American system, why this whole farce of the healthcare thing? It's really supposed to address the symptoms of a broken system. But why is nobody talking of actually fixing it? When I go to Brooks here, I paid $98 for an ad book, for frigging ad books. I mean, I'm a college professor, I have great insurance, I wouldn't have to care about any of this, but I care about my fellow citizens. When she broke her toe, when she broke her toe in Austria, we went to go to the hospital. My wonderful even travel insurance group covered it. Broken toe, a line in the toe, by really well-trained doctors in ER in a world-class hospital, 230 euros, that's about 280 dollars, uninsured. Now please tell me, why politicians do not address the pink elephant that is a healthcare system and healthcare providers that just charge outrageous amounts of money for healthcare so that people die in this country? It's just a joke. To you, it's a joke, how this rich country can let citizens die.
So your experience in Australia? There we go. So, when we talk to, what was it, you said $98 for the ad book? Yeah, here, right? You're touching on something that I think there's a lot of common ground for us to achieve some form of time. Because why that cost $98 doesn't make any sense to me. That's why last week, or it was four weeks ago now, I apologize, four weeks ago now, we voted for things like removing the antitrust exemption for our health carriers. I believe not allowing them to hide behind those protections is good. It's bringing more sunshine to the transaction of health insurance and healthcare. And I think you're going to see an overall effort to bring more transparency to that situation. So then by bringing transparency, so when you go to that doctor, when you ask that doctor, when you were at Brooks, did you ask him, why did it cost $98? What's the point? Well, that's the, that's the issue. That's the flaw, to me, to me, that's the fundamental flaw in the national healthcare system. All of this stuff, there's... That is the reforms that I believe are going to do a bad job to drive the cost down. So let me ask you this one, from your experience in Austria, what are the price, how do you control prices of healthcare in Austria? How does Austria do that? So who in the government, who in the government is making the decision who gets what healthcare and where they get healthcare? Who's making that decision? Well, that's what we're screaming for, right? So then who controls, who, what is the mechanism that contains the cost in Austria? We completely disagree with a single payer system.
We have time for one more time, and we're going to switch over to the President. I wonder how there should be an independent investigation into any Russian.
Now, as it is proceeding, as we have stated before, we're going to let the facts and evidence drive this process. And we're watching the House Intel, we're watching the Senate Intel Committees doing their investigation. A lot of information is coming out. And some real serious questions are being raised about our surveillance programs as to, so as that evidence comes out, if that evidence shows that we are not doing the jobs the House demands, then a force, an independent investigation is that next step in the process. But we're going to let the process take its course. We're going to let the facts drive the process. No, no, no. We're going to let the facts drive the process. And the independent rule is something that on the vote could be deployed if the facts don't...
That how the Senate Committee cannot do it. We had an independent investigation for watergate. At this point, we really need, this is the most serious violation in our country ever. We just were attacked by a border country into our democracy. We have to have an independent investigation immediately. We already have seen in the House, you know, the person had to step down because of that, like, you know... But they did for the media, we all get it. We now are calling on, as Americans, not by, this is bipartisan, this is not Republican, this is an independent, this is a Democrat, this is if you're an American. We were attacked. We are one country, we need to have an independent, no-politics investigation.
I'm making sure I'm hearing you correctly. When you say we were attacked, are you saying our voting system was attacked? There have been a lot of folks who've called the audience, that have talked to us and said that they believe the whole voting system has been attacked. And that's not the case, do we all agree that's not the case? Do we get a lot of applause for that? So you are certain that the voting process was attacked? So there are votes here, there are votes here who believe the voting system was attacked by Russian influence. The voters, the voters? We all agree that's not the case, there's no evidence to that, right? Just so we're clear, I'm glad, I think we clarified it, I think we clarified it, so that if anybody out there believes that the voting system, the integrity of the voting system was in jeopardy or was attacked, quote-unquote, but that's not the case. The outcomes of the votes were happily reflected in there. And if I'm sure, if I'm sure, we are in agreement there.
All right, so we are, I'm actually trying to end our road next topic. Somebody asked how you are trying to represent all of your constituents.
So how are we trying to represent all our constituents? 717,000 people is who we represent. So what we try to do is make ourselves accessible. We identify a common ground, we can identify the common ground on climate change and energy policy. I think there was some common ground here. The issue is, you can never agree with 717,000 people. I have 11 older brothers and sisters. If you can agree with your family, your spouse, your priest 100% of the time, then please tell me how to do that. But what we try to do, but what we try to do is we are going to always be accessible. We keep showing up, and we can hopefully identify more common grounds. But we are not going to change where we stand when it comes to our philosophical differences. I respect that, that's America, and that's where a lot of this is... You know, that is, that is democracy, and I fully support that process. And I look forward to having that debate as we go forward. Thank you so much.